...as a community since it's been how long?
The Matrimo deal was initiated in 2015 with the zoning process starting in 2017.
2017, okay, well, very good deal. We thought that for the first round, we would turn to the staff and Shayla Pico as the director to kind of get an understanding of where they are right now, hoping also to, I know that you met with council people and certainly met with people with the Planning Commission as well, which will be handling this in the near future. Do you have any idea of timelines to this?
Sure.
It's really up to you to do your presentation.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mrs. Rich, Mrs. Gregory, for hosting this meeting. What we would like to do today is there's been a lot of engagement over the last several months with respect to this draft, and so we thought we'd spend a little bit of time walking you through how we've had to respond with our engagement as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, but since that time, we have received some additional comments. So while we're in the very early stages of still calling through the comments that we've received, what we want to be able to do is help you understand, you know, what we've been doing for the last several months, but then what we plan to do moving forward. And I'll wrap up my comments with just a summary of our timeline and next steps. So just to get us going, in March, March 13th actually, was when the Draft 3 was uploaded to our website. March 16th, we reached out in multiple communication methods to alert the community that the new, the draft document, the revised draft, had been uploaded. And of course, thought that we would move forward with our public comment period, but obviously, the world turned in a very different direction that none of us anticipated. So with that, we tried to do as best we could to make sure that people knew that the information was on the website and tried to refer as many folks as we could, but we delayed the public comment period until many, many, many weeks later. So on May the 28th, we launched our public comment period. That was a 30-day review. We obviously could not meet in large groups or gatherings, so a lot of virtual meetings, a lot of video conferencing was done. We launched our portal, which gave folks, after they had the opportunity to participate in virtual meetings, to give updates, educate, and provide an overview of our work. The portal was launched so that people could communicate with us and sort of give their specific take relative to the articles that were outlined. So that process ended on June 28th with respect to the public comment period, but during that time, we received over 400 comments via the portal. And obviously, folks that could not communicate with us using, you know, digital platforms, we received things in writing, so all of that represents the statistics that you have in front of you. Just to give a little bit more insight regarding those comments, there were 55-plus commenters, so they could provide comment, obviously, on multiple things, on multiple articles, but those groups ranged from public utilities, concerned citizens, neighborhood groups, it was a variety of folks that we were very pleased were engaged in this process, given our change in platform. We hosted what we refer to as our virtual public meeting on June 3rd, so the public had an opportunity to register and participate and have an interactive discussion with us relative to the information that we shared. So again, the feedback came from diverse interests. We heard from environmental interest groups, nonprofit entities, business, economic development associations, again, our utilities, and many, many neighborhood and community organizations. So as we have started the process to go through the documents or the comments that we've received, and let me say, I think that folks have really been tracking along with us over the last couple of years. They seem to be very knowledgeable in terms of the direction that we're moving in, and so the nature of their complex, of their comments are a little bit more complex, very detailed, very thoughtful, and so because of that divergent range of interests, you know, we find ourselves where we're trying to focus our attention on what's best for our community from a quality of life perspective, but then making sure that we're trying to create a predictable path toward development so that there's clarity in our process. And as we strive to that, to do that, sometimes you create very divergent interests that have very different ideas of what should take place with respect to our UDC. So with that, we have initiated what we refer to as our staff analysis phase. So right now, the team that's been working on this is categorizing the 400 comments that we've received by article and by section. We are analyzing the comments to make sure that we understand the particulars. We're having to, in certain instances, you know, research to ensure compliance with laws that oversee our zoning procedures and practices. And so our goal through that very complicated and arduous process is to come out of that work with what we refer to as Draft Version 4. So with that, the next step would be to have a, what we would call our final draft. We have heard from multiple groups, so we may be reaching out to various interests where we need additional information to kind of refine the procedures that we've outlined within the UDC. But with that, our next step would be to take that Draft 4 to the Planning Commission, whereby they are to offer a recommendation, which would obviously be forwarded on to the city council for adoption as this is an ordinance. So we've got a lot of work to do. September is our target date that we're working toward, but as we, what will really dictate that timeline is our ability to navigate through the 400 comments that we receive.
Shayla, is the September, is that Planning Commission or the council?
Planning Commission, yes. So again, as we get organized around the comments that we've received, there are duplicates, so, you know, we're working to make sure that they're, we're grouping them correctly because at the end of this, in addition to having a refined Draft 4, a final Draft 4, we will have a report that attempts to, in summary, explain why one policy recommendation versus another is being presented to the Planning Commission and offer, you know, a general rationale as to why. So we've heard from citizens time and time again that I've given comments and I'm not seeing my comments within the document, and so my response to that would be that, you know, we will have a report that hopefully gives a little bit more of an explanation as to, you know, why a zoning recommendation is being forwarded in advance to the city council to give them some sense of why. Some of it, I think, we cure through education in explaining what these procedures allow us to do or not allow us to do. A lot of what we see with respect to comments really do not fall within the scope of the zoning ordinance. Some of them, you know, could be stormwater management practices. It could be, you know, capital improvement-related issues, and so just helping folks to kind of understand where we have scope and authority with respect to the UDC and with respect to zoning, and then perhaps, you know, helping them to understand what other ordinance or other city vehicle may be able to address one issue or another. So that is our goal in having a companion document that is presented to the Planning Commission along with a refined, revised Draft 4.
On your Draft 4, there will be a comment period because you feel like you've been weighted down enough, so it will be a draft, of course, but it's not law until the council votes, but you don't, do you anticipate a lot of changes from 3 to 4 from what you're, what the point you're at now? Or are you still working through on that?
I wouldn't say that I would classify them as significant changes, but there could be modifications or edits. One of the things that is the biggest difference between 2 to 3 is the zoning, and just based on some of the commentary that we're receiving, a lot of people are still confusing our future land use map with the zoning district, and so trying to provide a little bit more education that the existing zoning would stay the same is a lot of communication around that effort. So the bulk of our comments came from the proposed zoning that was disseminated with Draft 2, and so when we moved toward relying on the existing ordinance, that cut our comments in half.
You know, but it's going back to the same names for different categories?
Correct, yeah. So whereas we had over 1,000 previously, I think that helped boil down the number of comments we received by half.
Let me make sure I understand this. On the 55, those are, you have 400 distinct different comments, but you're saying 55 individuals or?
Entities, and so...
So it could be an individual could represent a group?
Correct, yeah. And whether it was a neighborhood group or, you know, a nonprofit organization, in some instances, that represented multiple constituents.
We didn't care if it was one person or a group of 1,000. It was considered that to be two groups. On the comment, the virtual public meeting that took place on June 3rd, how many people came out to that?
Um, we, so that meeting, you could register to participate so that you could essentially log in and ask a question.
How many people was that emailed to?
That was, that was emailed to a, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I believe we had over 35 individuals who registered, but that meeting was also live streamed, and so I heard from folks that, you know, chose not to participate in and ask questions.
But they audited it, or they audited it, like, is it still up?
It's still up. All of the meetings...
You having a number of views that it...
I have not asked the webmaster to provide that, but we can get that for you.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. I would say during that time period, I was able to calculate, just based on some of the meetings that we hosted, there were over 15 organizations that participated. That doesn't specifically speak to the virtual public meeting, but we had over 15 organizations that we interacted with during that time period.
Hey, Beth, turn on your microphone. Is that better? Can't hear, sorry, my mask. All right, are there any questions from this side of the aisle on the presentation? Comments? How about above? Anything else that you...
My question would be, we can't go through the Planning Commission, but if it's a two-year-old question, if we're going through the Planning Commission, will the planning commission be anything else to really document itself? What point can all this go and anticipate that the whole region would be back?
So we are making allowances to reach out to the organizations that we've heard from during that time period, and I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your second, your second question.
You know, approximately when they will get a chance to review that before it goes to the Planning Commission?
Um, it will be in advance of the, us taking it forward to the Planning Commission. I don't, we haven't put our timeline to that specifically, but that, it's our goal to interact with those groups prior to it going to the Planning Commission. Oh, no. No. And per usual, we'll, you know, continue our communications, but we, when I talk about the diverse groups that we interacted with, the public utilities, business associations, real estate, neighborhood organizations, nonprofit, environmental groups, all of those we plan to interact with.
How much notice does the Planning Commission have to give for a public hearing?
The call for public hearing, we would call for it, come to the Planning Commission and ask for a call, and so is it 30?
It'll be roughly a month prior.
30 days.
And then you have to advertise the, is it 300 pages? Is it gonna pare down? No, you synopsize. It just, it's the call for the public. And a synopsis, and where they can find the full if they're looking? Correct.
So it comes to the Planning Commission in September, and then you call for the public hearing?
Probably call in September.
Which would be like 30 days?
Call in September. We would call for it in September.
For hearing?
In October. Oh, okay.
So it will be released to the public for that? By the call, it would be released. Okay, and then there'll be a date of a Planning Commission meeting or a separate meeting? Is there, will there be guidance from the staff as far as whether it's to be broken up in front of the Planning Commission? Who will make the decision on what aspect or how long it takes them to go through the process?
Well, we've had communication with our chair and with respect to the process, and I think the preference would be, as we will interact with all of these, you know, various groups, we'll do similar with the Planning Commission, and so it's not the staff's intention to prescribe what that process will be. It'll, we'll be looking to the chair to give us guidance on how he would like to see that exercised through that time, whether that's, you know, obviously, we know we're required to have a public hearing.
Right, is there a best practice on that that anybody's aware of?
Well, you know, I think that what we have attempted to do over the last couple of years by being fully transparent, offering the revisions through an iterative process, you know, I think that the feeling is that, you know, the staff has taken a lot of time and energy in not trying to rush this, but giving the public an opportunity to interact. And so I don't mean to say that, you know, some level, whether it's a subcommittee meeting or a business meeting, or, you know, I'm not saying that this replaces that, but I think that the feeling is that we've done a lot to help expedite that as much as we can once it gets to the Planning Commission, so.
Gina, do you have anything you need or interested in or...
No, the one thing that Shayla had mentioned when we met before, just, you know, groups of twos, however we did it, was that on some of the comments, that you'll put some together that might be specific to our districts or groups or whatever that we're working with, so if you've got that, you know, sometime soon or...
Well, what we'll do is, we're really trying to keep them organized around specific articles, so as an example...
Specific like issues or, yeah?
Well, I think where we anticipate significant, where we anticipate changes so that you're alerted and understand that we're doing, we're recommending something differently than what was prescribed in Version 3, so you see that called out and it's explained and given a summary and a reason why a change was made. And so we have, obviously have overlay districts, and so I anticipate that if we receive comment on an overlay district, you know, then it'll be aggregated based on how the document is laid out. So it won't necessarily be separated by council district, but it'll, it'll sink to the articles within the document.
For instance, you know, Article 13 is an overlay district. Any comments for Article 13, those will be enumerated, and then if there's specific subsections that they relate to, they'll be grouped there. But we're doing that for the whole document, not just for the other. Will that be available for the public or is that internal?
It will be a companion piece that's presented at the same time that the Draft 4 is, so you'll basically get a synopsis of the changes from 3 to 4.
Okay.
And that will be made public, and it's, we hope that it helps clarify any misunderstandings that, or offers insight into the, you know, decision-making process, so.
And when the Planning Commission is making their recommendation, are they also recommending all of the processes that have been placed into the zoning document, you know, as far as what group hears an appeal or a, so what, is that all done at once?
Procedures?
Yes, ma'am. Article, Article 1 through Appendix A would all move forward at one time, which includes the article on procedures. Okay, procedures, that's worth, thank you.
And the art, the document is not structured in a way where you can advance?
Pieces.
Pieces. It's all tied together.
Okay. And there's, but there's, you have a purpose in putting forth those procedures and how you arrived at them. Is there a document that follows that as far as the procedure changes that would be different than what the community's been used to?
We have not anticipated an additional document that outlines...
Outlines the way, you know, it used to be done this way, now it's going to be done.
Right, yeah.
There's no... So how does one arrive at the fact that it's a positive or why it was being changed from past protocol or procedure?
The why it was changed, I mean, that's exactly the type of feedback that we're, we're asking.
So I should be able to read that then?
Correct.
Okay, because I don't remember seeing that. I just know that it was pointed out that there were changes.
Okay, I mean, the procedures is its own article, and it walks you step by step what you would be required.
And to the rationalization?
Not the rationalization, but how you navigate from step A to step Z.
The rationalization will be in the companion piece, though?
If there's a change to the procedures, if we do something to modify what was in Version 3, then, and that's different in Version 4, we'll explain why.
It's not just an overall, here's why we're changing it completely, it's just from the one version to the next as to why?
Correct.
That's correct. Not going back to...
Going back.
The goal is to make sure that, you know, because this is a, you know, 300-page document, and it is to help folks find the change. Our goal is to not make a change that gets, you know, muddied in the water. We want you to be able to see this is different between versions.
And here's the comments that motivated that change.
Right.
Any other questions from over here? Any additional information or... So if it's, we, we're looking at a September, and I know nothing's in cement, so no one's being, gonna be haunted over this, but you're thinking, you know, as far as things are going today for the Planning Commission, but you don't know how long they'll take as far as their aspect of the public hearings for it?
Correct.
Or if they'll split it out and look at procedures and go through that, you don't know, and it's up to the chair, is what you're saying?
I have communicated with the chair, not offering any recommendation or, to use the earlier word, best practice, other than to say what we're legally required to do, but, you know, we didn't want to walk in and assume anything.
I didn't know if there were practices that you were looking to model to roll out something like this, is what I was thinking.
Well, again, I would say that I think it's important to note that what we're legally required to do with respect to our zoning ordinance is to come before the Planning Commission.
Oh, that's like letter of the law, yeah.
And ask for a recommendation, and so for the last, you know, two-plus years, we've been trying to employ best practices from other communities, and quite frankly, they haven't been as elongated as ours because it's generally, here it is, tell us what you think, and it either, it's approved or not. And so by elongating the engagement and outreach process, we feel like we've employed some best practices by way of meeting with multiple organizations to get their feedback and then giving them the opportunity to wait, to respond to the document well in advance before it's ever put forward to the Planning Commission or the city council for review. So that's certainly a best practice that we've employed and have been employing for the last couple of years.
Okay, sounds fair. Yes?
So once the Planning Commission gets the final draft and they approve, and if they say, I understand the science or the data behind how you want to change, however, you would like to recommend something else, do you guys take that into consideration or maybe you guys look up to the drawing board and say, let's take a look at this particular section that the Planning Commission has raised?
It is my goal to respond to feedback that we receive from the Planning Commission. Now, what I, just to be, you know, upfront about, is modifications to this document require that we go back through the advertising process, and so that is quite costly for us, so...
Could certainly happen. You might wind up with a Draft 5 or 6, Shayla, before this is over.
Or at least advertise parts of it different.
So our hope is before we, you know, find ourselves in a situation that we are taking the time to interact with the Planning Commission prior to, to see if we're, in moving in the direction that they would like to see.
So in a perfect world, would that happen before a public hearing or after a public hearing?
In a perfect world, and we will be interacting with the Planning Commission, and we have been. We meet with them either through business meeting, updates. Some of them have come to us and approached us individually, I want to understand, and so we, just as we've interacted with all of the other organizations, we do the same with the Planning Commission.
Okay, so that's a question. So once the public hearing is had, and the planning commission hears from the public about things, and then they are like, you know what? There's a lot of people talking about this particular article or this particular section that's reviewing. Do they get a chance to do that and then give another recommendation back to the city council or...
Would I, my response to be, to that would be, we will respond to the feedback that we receive from the Planning Commission, whether it's in part or in whole.
And I guess as far as the re-advertising thing goes, it would depend on how much would change, like from Draft 4 to maybe if any change comes before the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission approves a couple, three, four changes, and that would definitely require re-advertising and I don't know.
I'll just speak to that, okay.
Well, doesn't, whatever is advertised, I know for the council...
That's it, for the council.
Oh, for you, for the plan, it doesn't? Oh, okay.
At the Planning Commission, you have the minimum required by law of a public hearing. When the commission calls for that public hearing, the document has to be made available to the public, and at that point, that is what the public hearing is based on. And once the commission holds the public hearing, that's their minimum legal requirement. At that point, they can amend, you know, recommend, have changes to the document, to any of the articles or the appendix before making a vote and sending the recommendation to the council.
But, and so whatever we get, that's when...
You're looking at having to re-advertise all amendments. So it's not re-advertized when they make the recommendation, it's re-advertized? If we, I believe if y'all own yours, because all the commission's doing is recommending your voting on law as the council... I understand that, but once it comes up to council and we call a public hearing, what gets advertised? what gets advertised?
Whatever we have before.
And then if no individual stands before it is up, do we re-advertise?
Then, okay. So that's more of a step that the council could take?
Okay.
At least what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as the re-advertising and stuff like that.
But are, but the council cannot change anything that the planning commission recommends? That's the first set of public hearings?
They can change all of them.
Without, without having, they can change it before it's advertised?
If you advertise it before you have a hearing?
We advertise what comes to us, right?
Or hearing, you might want to have more than one.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and I know early on, it was even talked about, y'all adopt separate articles, none of which would be affected unless all are adopted, so they could gather, you know, some.
Classifications?
Because it's a beast.
It's big. It is big. Okay.
Yeah, that's something you'll want to figure out, how you handle it when it comes up to the commission. But the first advert, I'm happy to be...
What the, it, what is bought up and recommended? And then the council has to, on the hearing, okay, we, we, they recommended up to council?
Yeah.
And they will not, you don't anticipate, say, changes because they're going to do it all at once and they have one hearing? Even if they hear from people, will there be changes they could recommend up to council?
They can, they can.
Do they have to re-advertise that themselves? No.
All you have to do is the call, at the commission level.
Right, that's what I'm talking...
Is they call for public hearing and have the document publicly available.
Okay. But if they make changes after a commission meeting, what gets advertised at the, when the council calls the public hearing?
What they send us.
Changes will be made and so what is sent to the council will have those changes and that is what will be advertised.
Okay, all right. And then we have the, whatever the timeline to advertise the public hearing?
Yeah, the advertising is clearly, it's a, I mean, it's, it's just a technical thing. It's, you just have to be careful that whatever is on the agenda for adoption has been properly done.
Okay, I see, all right. So it could be in parts for the council could do it.
And the planning commission, once they make their recommendation, now they know their public hearing, they have their downed boards and whatever it is they do, it becomes a commission vote, then everything at the commission level is done and goes to the council and it's in your area and they'll help you figure out what procedures you want to do.
Okay.
This doesn't happen very often.
All right. Does that answer your questions about?
It does. So you can basically, changes can be made at the planning commission level to draft four and then they can also be made at the council level.
As final, yeah. Yeah, that's, okay. Yeah, we're all on the same sheet there. Sounds good. Elizabeth, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, all right. All right. I had down on here the next meeting date, but I think we'll keep that a little fluid at this point, okay? Until we know what the, you know, how it's...
As, as we make progress, as always, I'll inter, communicate that to you all.
All right, okay, great. All right. If there's any other business, I'll...
I guess I move, will you, John?
Okay, second that, so we can end. Thank you so much. And I'll make sure that CJ gets this. And if there are any notes, we'll get him a copy of, of kind of a minutes of this lineup, if that's okay? All right, I'll just make sure it gets, I'll give it to Courtney to get it out to him. Thank you, ladies. I didn't thank you enough.